Okay guys, we're live right now, we're recording.
We gotta start, can we, uh, thank you.
We'll start the meeting and we'll do the pledge. Okay, this is a meeting of the Community Preservation Committee and we're called over about ten after six P M. And we're live and local from primetime. And could we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America. To the people who stand modestly under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please, please. I think everybody, we don't, we do have, uh, our guest is, uh, Mr. Hall. He's dropping on, on one of our candidates here for, he's on Zoom. Anybody else on Zoom?
We have Jonathan Gills on Zoom and, uh, Dayton Watch was on, I think he left.
Dayton Watch? What happened to Mr. Dayton? He's not here. Okay. Dayton Watch?
And I'll keep checking every once in a while.
Oh. They all have coat, uh, little, you know, the, um, in his son. She and, okay, the agenda, everybody got their agendas in the emails? I hope you have it. I have one, I can pass around once I enroll one if you need to look at it. There's no printer here, I thought I could print something here, but I, we don't, we're not that, luckily we got a building. Okay. I'm gonna waive the, uh, approval of the minutes because we're, we did finally just talk a little bit on that. We did get all the records, the laptop, the printer, uh, the secretary resigned, you probably got notified. We are gonna post it internally. And we'll come up with a name, we're gonna pick the name, once we post it, well, if we have the interview, whatever we have to do. Then according to the law, which I just found out about, because I found a lot of stuff that I didn't know anything about, which I wish I would've had. And, uh, it'll go to the selectmen, they'll have to appoint her officially like we do. And then, but we will have, once we find the right candidate, we will have a paid, we have it in our budget. We'll have a paid, uh, like our former secretary. And there's gonna be a more kind of a plan on what needs to be done. She'll have guidelines instead of just, because I couldn't, could never get a job description. But I don't wanna go backwards, we're moving forward, we're progressing. Um, so we don't have any minutes at this point. We do have stuff that I'm piecing together, I got control of the file cabinet. If you go down the cellar, uh, it's not a cellar, it's a basement, lower level. Of the town hall, under the stairwell going upstairs, the first cabinet on the left is now secured. That is our cabinet, that has some other, more of our records. So everything's gonna be kept there, once we get a secretary, she'll get the laptop, she'll get the printer. And then she'll get all, whatever she needs to do her work.
Oh yes.
Here's her, I'm sorry. Yeah, all inclusive, whoever it is.
Mr. Chairman, that laptop, uh, I put that together for her a few years back, so I'm probably gonna have to give return, get a new one.
Exactly.
Just to let you know, it's probably old.
Whatever your, our.
And she was having problems with it even when I gave it to her.
Right, she had conductivity, uh, issues where she lived in Berkeley and it was, always had a lot of, uh, conductivity connection. We, we drop off and on often. Anyhow, so, uh, I, you know, I just found out she resigned and we have to move ahead.
Is the Board of Selectmen posting it as an opening?
We're posting internally.
From, on our, on the website?
And into the town hall.
Okay.
Internally. Mr. Hall may have some.
And you guys, you spreading the word on that? Everything I need is, is your deadline for submission.
We don't.
We have summer break, correct?
Yeah, we're gonna come back in Sep-, is it August or September? September.
I thought we took a break in the summer because of the lack of, people on vacation.
We take the summer off.
If that's okay, unless we need everyone to see meeting, we usually don't meet in the summer.
I mean, we, we usually come back, I think in September, right?
Are we going back into third Thursday again?
We're, yeah, this was just, uh.
Okay.
And just to explain this, uh, it's like a general discussion, um, we got bumped because, uh, FinCom really needed a room in the selectmen, so we, we worked, we worked it out, that's why we had to move it. And it was very important to let them have that, so, believe me, I was like, what? You know, I, I was a little, you know, I was like, but we worked it out. And that was an important group of people, it was packed in here with people. Like I made, all over the place, so they got it done. And here we are, so we worked that out.
Is this still an opening, left of CPC?
We still have, uh, there was some going around that Adele might come back, but I can't get in touch with her. And the lady, the new lady that runs the, uh, elderly and the primetime is now on vacation. I did have, uh, convers-, uh, I left her a message that I heard Adele wanted to come back and if she wanted to put her back in, we'll. But now it's dead, she's, I got no communication, so.
He's another person who applied twice. Now, he said he went through the website, I tried to help him out a little bit. Didn't see it, you, he did it a second time, he still didn't see it. And then when I talked to somebody, regardless who it was, I said, you really want to be part of the CPC? They, they stated like, maybe he should just write something down, hand carry it to the town hall.
Or put it in the box.
Yeah, so I reached out to him one more time and said, hey, if you really wanna be on CPC, write something up, type something out. Give it to Leanne or one of the secretaries, and we'll see what you can do for you. And, and once, I didn't hear anything after that, so I'm not sure what's going on.
Part of what we're doing tonight is the application for, uh, the first order of business when we get the new businesses. Mr. Gales has his papers in. So we're gonna look at that tonight, we vote on that tonight to get him into the, Kevin is already appointed by Park and Rec and that's why he's here. So he's in already and, uh.
It is on our agenda, our next meeting.
Okay.
To approve your recommendation.
Okay. And I'm gonna send you a letter anyhow. Once we get to the.
So currently, there's only one at-logs.
We're missing one, uh.
One at-large member?
Well, Adele knows housing.
That's what I mean, so the vacancy is, was one at-large vacancy and has one housing vacancy.
Correct.
All the other committees.
Everything else is.
I think Planning Board.
Oh, Planning Board.
No, well, here's what I was told from Planning Board, I called down to the secretary, uh, the manager of the Plan. She said they tabled it till June. I was trying to get him in here.
For the Planning Board?
No, no, the, uh.
Appointment?
Appointment for us. They, I, I thought they were gonna send them faster, but they tabled it till June, that's what I was told. Does any, I mean, I'm just telling you what I was told. I don't know what to do. In other words, they've got somebody in mind, but, because they just put a new person on there. To fill Tim Reinsie, I believe. So what, instead of just doing it, I thought that person would be here tonight. But they told me it was tabled till June, their June meeting. Do they meet in June?
They meet Monday.
Okay. So obviously, as far as trying to reorganize, this is another can of worms. I really, it wouldn't be fair to leave the Planning Board or the housing out in the reorganization. I've got one year left, if you wanna keep me on, I, I'll serve. And I got one year left. I think what I've been through, I, give me a shot, I'm steadily improving, you know.
But you have that under new business, so.
Yeah, I know, I'm just, I'm just, uh, we're on this rant right now, but we'll move on. So let's, uh, I don't really have a lot of old business, and I'm just happy to be here and that we have a quorum. We have control of the file cabinet, it's locked, okay? We have all the records turned in, and I wish I would've had it a few months ago, it would've been so sweet.
Who did you have the keys, Mr. Chairman?
There's one key, so I've gotta get another one made probably for the vice chairman.
Yeah, or even, uh.
Or even.
Is it customary to leave?
Just hanging, you know.
You don't know procedures, Mr. Hall, is it customary to give the court one or somebody over there one?
Yeah, whatever we decide, you need at least two in case the other guy can't make it.
I have one at town, something that saves keeping that at town hall.
Yeah, when I get into the, some other business here, we'll talk about that. Alright, so, uh, let's go into, oh, Mr. Hall.
Yeah, yeah, has a policy about keys, so you might wanna.
We'll get them.
I know, he usually likes to have a key, God forbid, you know.
Yeah.
They have to get it.
We'll get them, I only have one, so I will find somebody to make another couple. Maybe we, I know it's in a, but we can afford it. So anyhow, uh, I'm just kidding. Um, let's go to new business, because there's really a whole business. The first thing I'd like to do is review and discuss an act of, on, uh, new application for membership of Jonathan Gale. So everybody got a copy of his application, was emailed to you with the agenda and the other stuff. Did everybody get it? I do have a copy that I can pass around. The gentleman is highly qualified.
Oh, no, I see the listings.
This all got distributed to everybody, the guy is like.
Can I just come in and sit there real quick?
Is there anyone that hasn't seen this? I got another one here.
Yeah, and I'll pass it real quick.
This is an at-large position?
He's at large, right, Mr. Jonathan?
He's at large. Take a second, look at that.
I'm good.
Just to talk, I mean, I don't know, I know the guy's solid, he's, uh, from what I understand, you know, he's highly qualified.
Yep.
And that night, we were working together in that little recess and we worked things out and everybody was working together. I, I actually, I, I mentioned to him, I says, you should consider, uh, coming on board, and he said it was on his radar, and here he is. So, as far as, you know, I want, if we can, if everybody feels comfortable and they reviewed the information, we can vote on it tonight.
Actually, can we, can we ask some questions?
Yeah, you don't know that much about me.
Mr. Gale, Kevin Smith.
Mr. Smith, Mr. Gale, how are you?
Fantastic. Thank you for talking to us.
You're welcome, I'm, I'm down in Florida for work and, work and, work and play, but unfortunately I've come up with COVID, so my wife is out of play and I'm stuck in a condominium.
Oh man, sorry to hear that.
So.
Feeling better?
I'm starting to, a little bit, I've been down for a few days now, so.
Yeah, I had it a couple of weeks ago, but it took me down for about a week, so.
I'm just beginning to feel like I'm a human being again, like a, like a truck hasn't run over me.
Good, I'm going back with this, sir.
Anyway, what can I answer for you, Mr. Smith?
Uh, you just, uh, under, explain why you're applying for this position, you put, I believe, as ADA coordinator and as the Chair of the Commission on Disability. I will be able to support and contribute to the continuing development and future plans of the Community Preservation Committee. Can you just add on to that a little bit for us on, on why you wanna be a part of the committee and?
Sure, I think that there, there are a lot of things that CPC does with regard to the things that the CPC has asked to fund, that whether it's something related to, uh, for example, the playground, the, the North Titan Playground. Or other things that you might be add to, ask to fund, you know, to bring back rehab or do anything like that at all. From my perspective, as the ADA coordinator for the town, as, and as the Chair of the ADA Commission. It makes sense to have a person such as me on the CPC, because I'm giving a different voice to everything that you're looking at. So, you know, no matter what it is, I'm looking at it from the perspective of if this is funded or if this is allocated. Is this is something that can be made ADA compliant, is it something that has to have an ADA component? Doesn't have it, doesn't need it, doesn't warrant it, but it just allows, I think, for a different perspective that otherwise isn't thought about. And then beyond that, I think I have a fairly good understanding, I hope I have a fairly good understanding for what the expectations are and what's required and what the, what the rules and the responsibility of the CPC are.
I can, uh, did you have?
No, very good, thank you.
Uh, I just wanna reiterate, I asked, you know, I like to, I'm kind of a hands-on guy and I like to talk to people face-to-face. I'm not big on the tele-, you know, I'm terrible with the telephone. But, uh, I did talk to a lot of people that know you really well and, uh, the work you've done and the work you're doing. And once again, all I kept hearing was you're a very solid guy and when you get involved in something, you know, you're, you do a good job, so. And I do look forward to having you come on board and, uh, it will give us a different perspective. But I mean, we're, we're trying to look at everything, so you're definitely gonna be an asset to the, to the membership, to the group.
Well, first of all, if, if I'm approved, I appreciate it, um, and I appreciate the, the vote of confidence. And, you know, I felt when, when I was at the recent meeting and, you know, you were going back and forth with, you know, how to put something in, how to, how to determine the language to be and so forth, and I was a member of the public audience, but you allowed me to participate and throw my, you know, my two and a half cents in. Um, I appreciated that, and it showed an openness to, willingness to listen and to hear. Instead of, you know, you could have visually said, no, you're a member of the public, we're working on this, but instead, you let me, you know, say what I had to say and you listened to it. You didn't have to agree with it, but you did, um, and I appreciated that, so, um, I feel that this is a place where I won't always have a voice because I won't need to, but when I do need to use my voice, I think you all know I will.
Right, and I mean, uh, we did get some feedback on that, I mean, I, I heard both sides of the story and, uh, as far as I'm concerned, we're in a recess, that's just the way I operate, I don't think it's a big deal. Some people might've been, uh, embarrassed or, uh, felt kinda funny about it, but it all worked out and I didn't, you know, I, I accepted feedback, good or bad, and, uh, but I welcome people to come forward and, you know, it is the people's money. So I don't see why people that are at the meeting can't give input, you know what I mean? It was a, it was a, uh, I don't think it was, I think it was more of a, uh, an asset than a hindrance.
And I'm, I'm, I am the kind of, I am the kind of person, I will say, that always prefers conversation, I'm not, you know, I do text and the things that everybody does. Um, you know, whatever I have for resources, but if it's up to me, I'd rather use a telephone or an in-person conversation.
Okay.
I have a question for Mr. Gales. So, uh, Jonathan, we go way back and, uh, so I think this is gonna be a, a good fit for us because when we brought up the playground about three years ago, it's sorta like that the legs cut out because we didn't go to the ADA coordinator. So what it did was it set that playground project back, which is a good thing because we didn't do the ADA compliance correctly. So I'm hoping going forward as a partnership, that when we push, when we push projects through, the ADA will go right along with it, so we can just keep them going. Because when we, uh, held this last project back for the North Titan Playground, I think we lost almost like two or three years. So I think the good thing you're coming on, I appreciate that, and, uh, I hope with your expertise, we can just move these projects a little bit faster.
I appreciate it, I, I, I think so too, Dave. Um, as I noted in my, in my application, I'm CAM certified, which means I'm certified as a community access monitor by the Commonwealth, so you know, if you wanna know whether the ramp is the right angle or the right, you know, at the right degrees, or you wanna know anything about any public access for ADA. You know, I have that certification as well, so, you know, when we look at things that are funded, I can look at it from the perspective of what's the requirement, what's the legal requirement? And I don't just mean to meet a, uh, the minimum, I mean to take us into the future. There's a lot of money that gets spent by CPC for some of the projects that you approve. And that money needs to have a lot of value, and the only way it has a lot of value is if it goes way into the future. So I'm hoping some of what I can bring is to be able to bring, you know, the areas that I have expertise in, into that, that process for the future.
Alright, thank you, sir, we appreciate that.
Very good.
I just wanna add one more thing, just kinda on, on Jonathan's behalf, because I don't know, I think, I know him.
Yeah.
David knows him really well, Jonathan and I spent a lot of the time together. Outside of, just so everybody is aware, I think outside of the ADA component, um, Jonathan is somebody that I've got to know very, very well over the last couple of years. And he's someone that does, you know, truly, I think, care about our community and moving us forward, whether it's parks, you know, conservation, open space. Um, historical, I know he has some ties to the Historical Society as well. So I think, you know, personally, I feel like he's a good asset to this because he does, you know, care about all of the, um, other committees that we encompass and that we would be, we would be funding. And I think he would give his honest opinion about whether or not he thinks that a project is worthwhile or not.
I agree.
Anybody else? Anything?
I, I agree, uh, totally. It's just gonna be an asset to the group because it's an expert.
So Chairman, I recommend we take a vote.
Okay, so.
I will make a motion that we accept Jonathan Gale's application for an at-large membership.
I second that motion.
Okay. Motion made, seconded, and we'll do a roll call, Dave.
Aye.
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 And myself, as I, but unanimous, so welcome.
Welcome aboard, sir.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you all very much, I really, I appreciate it, and I look forward to going to the next meeting and letting my voice be heard one way or another.
Okay.
That's what it's all about, so thank you all very much for considering me.
Thank you for coming on, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Absolutely, I'm gonna stay on for a few minutes.
Okay, sounds good.
Alright, next order of business, what, we, uh, had to have some informal discussion. I'd like to form a subcommittee to study policy and procedures. Now, I'm not saying replace what the state does, but try to, right, we're, we just wanna try to clear, I had a hard time trying to figure out. Like, we didn't have a job description for the secretary, nobody knew who, nobody had a job description. So we're trying to get that figured out for the new party, whoever we hire, whoever comes on board for that. Then, uh, just some of the little things, like if we could just get it, what I, my goal is, I'll do another year, I'm done in a year as far as, I mean, I can re-up again, but I mean, I've got, on my thing, I can do another year. I just wanna get it all set up so anybody could walk in and take it over instead of going through what I went through, trying to find bits and pieces of everything. It wasn't, you know, and I've learned a lot from it, and, uh, I always, I definitely thank for everybody kinda stuck with me. And, and they understood, you know, went through a lot of stuff.
But going on with you though, what I like to see, is we did a lot of paperwork, I know we need it. Maybe Kevin, you're already on the outside, I like to see some of this stuff like to be on, on a server somewhere. So, for instance, say we needed to do the, uh, the warrant, there would be a template already out there, we could just tweak it, put what we want. And I think we need, this is my opinion, check with Mark McChico and say, hey, we need some service space for these committees so we can throw those documents up there. And that way, if something happens to you, I'll look at your paperwork, I go up to the server and I can pull that document.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think I was told that they're working on something in that building. A little area where, a little alcove or something, there's gonna be some little, where the guy, the guy that's working there now has got all these tools and.
Oh, it's gonna be like a hotel in space where different committees go there and do it.
And then you can load your stuff in there, huh?
You can, but the thing is, you want it on a server where it gets backed up, so that way, if something happens to that workstation, we can say, hey, can we pull a document off our CPC that we need? Because what happened?
I think is that one of the reasons why the clerk is supposed to turn everything to the town clerk.
Oh, right, but I think he probably rather have, we need to talk to him, see if we can do it.
Well, we can do that, yeah.
What the process is, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You just send everything into clerk, like for parking.
Yeah, so for me, like, for me, for Parks and Rec, I'll send my agenda and then my minutes, and then it gets uploaded to the website.
Now, how do you send it that, Kevin? You, you give them paper or you?
I send it in a, in a Word document.
Here we go.
Which is, again, while Jonathan's here, this is something that, because I, actually today, just for example, for ADA compliance.
Although, although that would do this.
A Word, uh, PDF document, you can't click the link, so, you know, with Jonathan, who's, who's visually impaired, um, can't click the link. So I, I said, hey, Leanne, can you send them a link? Everything should always get sent in Word format.
Yeah.
Um, just because it's so much easier, and it's actually with the transition, the town's transitioning the website to a new, uh, new provider, which is also, it's easier to transfer Word docs into this PDF. So something to keep in mind, like as we're sending stuff, um, sending stuff over to them, but yeah, I think I'm not su-, I don't, I don't really know. Super computer savvy, where I know how it ends up on the server, but I'm assuming that the, the website is driven through the, the town server, so if it's on the website, it should be backed up on the server.
Yeah, they, they probably got shares out there, you know, different committees, that's right, they have, we just don't know, we need to talk to them.
I mean, not all of our documentation is gonna be available on the website, so there might be different places that it goes.
Well, I mean, like, more like, uh, like you say, you gotta get a gig of information where it's all reserved for CPC. And that way, if we have documents up there, we can pull it down, we have access to the server and say, oh, we need to do a warrant. Pull that warrant down on your laptop, let's tweak that. Good, we got a warrant, we can print it out and get it done.
Right.
We, we had that problem a couple of weeks ago where Jonathan basically bailed us out of that, because, like you said, we had no documentation or anything to go with it.
It did get tweaked, it did get a little tweaked.
Yeah.
Although the lack of, I mean, and this is just from, we all know what a pleasant experience I had.
Oh, yeah, lovely.
I think just top to bottom, we need to, one, make the application and the process available online, you know what I mean?
If I, if I can, if I can interject for all of you. The new, the new website, which we're in the process of doing this, there's a team working on, a small core team working on the new site, which is myself, Leanne, Karen, Mike, and Mark. And, um, the, we're in the process of working with the company now, we have weekly meetings and we have project deadlines, as some of you have seen emails about and so forth. One of the things that the, a couple of things the new site is gonna have, which will be up hopefully by mid-September, is, for example, all of the documents and forms that you require to be filled out or completed at all are gonna be on the site. And what, what the person is gonna be able to do is go to the site, select the form for the, the right committee that they wanna fill out, fill out the form, and then that will be automatically transmitted to the chair. So it won't just sit there, you won't have to wait for it, it'll automatically go to whoever the designated person is, in this case, I'm just saying the chair, to know that somebody has filled out an application. And then if there's other requirements, you can go back and forth, the same thing for your calendar, the same thing for your minutes, the same thing for warrant information. So it's all gonna be catalogued and it's all gonna be held up in the cloud as well, so it's gonna be offsite in the cloud for backup, for backup purposes. And then similarly, if you're trying to put something in there that is not, as Kevin alluded to, accessible, it's not gonna let you do it. Because there, now there are gonna be different criteria that have to be done in certain ways in order for things to be posted so that they are accessible. And that's not just for a person who's visually impaired, but for any disability. I think the biggest tool that's gonna affect committees such as this one is that the ability for the residents to go in and, and fill out forms and automatically have them go where they're supposed to go, and everything is gonna be done as an online tool, is gonna be an enormous difference compared to the way things are done now.
Okay, so that's gonna be helpful.
Yeah.
But you, would you still, anybody would like to be involved in a, like our little subcommittee that would be, I mean, maybe we don't need it.
I, I don't think we necessarily need it.
If this is coming, I didn't know anything about.
Well, that's only a piece of the puzzle though, so just for instance, as an example, I went, when I.
I know, but it's an art.
I, I got a form and I handed, and I handed that form in and I got told, well, you need ten copies, well, didn't say anything about.
I know.
The guidelines, so the guidelines posted on the website right now just show what's eligible. It gives you the eligibility, but it doesn't give you the requirements of your application.
Right.
So I think we need to streamline that process, um, for people, I, I think, again, it's our job to fund worthwhile community projects. Let's make it as transparent and open to the community as we can. Because I got, you know, spoken to separately outside of the meeting for a while and said that I was the only person who had a problem. Which essentially is problematic for the committee because, alright, so it's been kind of this, uh, it's been a mesh, you know, you had to, I talked to you before, I told you what I needed. So I, so far, like, we wanna provide this, where this is a service we provide to the community, let's make it open and available so that you don't come in and go, oh, you didn't bring ten copies, get out, we'll see.
Yeah, well, I feel, uh, this, I know where you're at, uh, I'm trying to move, I don't wanna say move forward, I'm gonna say progress in the forward direction.
Well, that's.
So I can't, I understand, we've been through all, you know, I, I'm with you, man. I mean, a lot of stuff that went on, I mean, I didn't, that, that information that I got was like three days before, I mean, you know. I wouldn't have had a chance if I wouldn't have had that paper.
Well, and not, not.
I tried, I was for it the whole time.
I spent in a, no, I'm, I'm, this isn't even project specific, it's just in general.
General, but I mean, we found out that there's no form, that one form is like in, uh, it's like.
It's, it's a, yeah, made up, yeah, and we got to the, um, application for funding.
Well.
You know, is that an internal document that exists somewhere? Possibly, but nobody seems to know.
Mr. Chairman.
This is what I wanted to do, I wanted to get this straightened out, so anyone could walk into this position. If someone wanted to step down and just be a member again, or if somebody wanted to take the position as chairman and run with it. You could just walk in, this is, one of my goals is to try to get this thing, and I'm sure you would be helpful with that also.
Oh, once again, when everything's on the cloud.
But we get this new thing, though, and we have all the problems.
You don't have this one committee person who's got like the stack of information sitting in your house and not sharing.
Right.
I'm not saying he's doing that intentionally, but that's where.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, you got a question?
Go ahead, sir.
Yes, what I was gonna say was, hearing what you're saying, what it, what the, from what the chairman is saying, it does make sense to have a subcommittee of some sort, especially. it does make sense to have a subcommittee of some sort, especially if there's not gonna be a meeting for a while and the reason, for, during the summer. And the reason I'm saying that is one of the things that we need in, in terms of web development is for all of the committees and the commissions to revamp their pages. And that means maybe change some language, clean it up, decide what they want for old material, decide what they wanna put up there for new material, for example, applications. But it has to go up clean. Once it goes up in September, it's more complex to go back in and change everything at that point. So it does make sense, I think, if I can interject, to have some sort of a subcommittee to review what's there now and what you wanna change and how you want it to look when it goes live.
Well, that was my thought. And I mean, I didn't know about this other stuff, but I, I did think that maybe if there were a few, some fresh eyes looking at it, or just some fresh people, or even our own people. I mean, this Dave's kinda like our tech guy. I'm hoping he hangs in there with us.
No, I think I will. I think, I like the idea, but it's gonna be a little bit of a process.
Yeah.
To figure out what we're gonna keep, what we're gonna change.
Well, there's not a whole lot to keep because there's only really two pages on there. One's the application.
Basically, that's the main, that's the main meat of the whole thing.
Guys, this is, we're not done.
I know, it's not.
Sorry, guys.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so, uh.
You know, I'm looking to try to figure out. Hang on a minute.
Let him finish.
Um.
Let him finish, I'll bring him along.
Okay, Tim, I think, did you also get this from Tim at some point?
Yeah, we got sent out to everybody about three days when we were going through all the, this isn't past now, but.
Right, so this, this, this is the key thing.
It's a good document, yeah.
Okay, this is the, same.
That's the meat.
Kinda revise this, bring it up to date.
Correct.
Looks like it hasn't been touched since 2015, so.
Go ahead, sir.
Okay. So what I would be doing is a little archaeology and looking back. Now, number one, uh, all of those applications historically, have they been saved someplace?
Yes. Yes, there are a lot of stuffs in the file cabinet. Uh, when, uh, Karen dropped off a pile of stuff at the town hall, which I picked up with the laptop and the printer. So I've been going through that and found a lot of stuff that.
Yeah, but I know what.
We have the, we have the paper.
Last, last three applications, I just couldn't.
Oh, yeah, we have it, yeah.
Yeah, did you put them in there? What kind of they hit it?
It got there by, uh, Karen has them, I have some stuff I put in. Uh, Tim has stuff he put in the file cabinet.
Okay.
He has stuff in his.
So no, it is, there's no.
The stuff was all, I'll be honest with you, I told you this before. The paperwork was all over.
You're not sure exactly then, is what you're saying.
No, no, I'm sure that it's all over.
Well, that goes, and that's, makes the importance of the.
That's why we want us, yeah.
Well, the position of the secretary or clerk, whatever it's called, that's the importance of that.
Oh, she thought.
That should be the one person.
Right.
You know, you're, you're gonna set the agenda, you're gonna call the committee, but essentially the clerk or the secretary.
And I'm making another key.
Should be filing all of this paperwork. Anything that you sign, for instance, like.
We got it somewhere. It's in the file. It is.
You gotta do better than that.
I know.
The other thing is, once you have that, once you have that, you can go back and look, what, what was the procedure used, even when, uh, Tim Reins was chairman, right?
He didn't.
Let's, let's see what historically people.
Some people.
In other words, can we find those applications?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we got it. The problem is, I'm not gonna go backwards because I'm not gonna mention names or try to point fingers, but I feel like I wanna share more information instead of just keeping.
No, no, I, I think that's what, I think that's what you're at. What you have to do is, you always go, if you.
Don't have that template.
When I was working in the government, if I had, somebody had been moved to a different job and I was assigned, and I didn't know anything about anything.
Right.
On his job, I would go back and look at all of the the things, the pieces, which in this case is applications. And what were they? And all the, it was asked, and it was that, you know, I can look inside and see how it was worded.
Mm-hmm.
So Tim Reins did leave a little bit of a legacy on one of his emails prior to, um, designing. And if you saw that, there was an attachment. It was like a PDF, a little PDF, I mean, you may not have seen it, but anyway, definitely a, a quick synopsis of, of my cookbook, uh, of how I did the CPC.
Mm-hmm.
So between, if I was sitting in the chair and, and nobody, this new job I got, and nobody had come in and told me anything.
Wasn't easy.
So I'd have to do this archaeology thing. Go back and, where are all the pieces? Where are, let's look at the old cases. Maybe they did it wrong, too.
Actually, yeah, we don't wanna reinvent the wheel, but we wanna take the valuable information and carry that forward.
I can tell you, here's the file that you brought. So I'm going through it. I also have, finally got the thumb drive that I was supposed to give. I finally got that. Now, I'm going back, Mr. Only, who was back in the past.
No, Ed, yeah, good guy.
Okay, so I'm telling you, I'm going through. Oh, oh, look at this. Look at this, oh, Lincoln Village. Whatever happened to that? I don't even know if they finished it. I don't know. Remember when I asked, did they finish that yet? No, because they couldn't put the transformer in because of COVID. So we didn't, we still don't even know if that was done.
Well, that's important, too, because you wanna look back and it's like.
Well, that's why the.
Did you fund this project five years ago? And what did you do with the money?
But that's why this young man over here has, what do you call them?
It should be a case file, but every, in other words, a folder.
Right.
But every single applications come through this.
Yeah, what they did was they just piled it on.
Piled it in, again, is awful and it's, I don't, I think.
That's why I like the electronic where you can see it, like nineteen seventy-nine, hold us up, off of the, okay, this is so many documents we had, this is what we did. They go through that pile of junk, like trying to find this stuff.
Like, well, I think if the, if, when we can go back to the state, I've done some research on the, the Mass Community Preservation Coalition, um, and see what their requirements are, if they've been updated. I know Tim would, you know, would always say that, you know, the state hasn't said you can do anything digital yet.
Right.
But that's not, that's not, that's not to say that we can't make a digital copy and put it in a record way. You can, because you know how it is, it's like if I wanna look up a file, say.
Play around.
Boom, boom, here it is.
Paperwork in a file.
Yes.
And the computer, correct.
Yeah.
Computer.
So we can, we got the file, you know, we got a place to start.
Yeah.
I, 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 does anybody wanna help with this? I mean.
I'm all for it. I mean, I.
I'm for it, yeah. So I see much, how much time, but I wanna like type in something now or look at something. Let's, uh, I, I think we were trying to keep the paper, we keep the paper trail going, keep the state here.
I know.
But meanwhile, we tweak up the electronic copy for ourselves. And then one day the state's gonna say, oh, yeah, once we have electronic copy, but we have to wait till that becomes law. And I know where Tim's coming from with that, so.
Yeah.
So the first thing is, you wanna go find all that stuff sitting in a big files on places. And you wanna collate, you wanna sort it out, collate it by application.
And here's another thing.
Okay, so, right, well, I mean.
Jonathan.
Yeah. Otherwise, you're just gonna go nowhere. If you haven't done that part of it, then it's still a lump of stuff sitting someplace and we don't know.
Yeah, we know where it is, it's just a lump. But I mean, here's the gentleman, Mr. Anderson.
I wanna ask Jonathan, so have, have you met, has that committee been meeting, the new website committee, new server committee? And, uh, you know, technology wise, are they setting up a database of documents so you can properly search for things? I, I don't wanna invent this ourselves.
So the answer, the, the answer to the question about a database is the database for the new website is probably gonna go back, in some cases, most cases, two years. And it would go back two years for minutes, for agendas, for applications and things like that. It's not gonna go beyond two years. Those things are gonna have to be archived separately. And probably either on hard copy or in another, in technology, but they're not gonna be on the website. So you will be able to go back up to two years, right, as of now. And that's it. Then what we, what we're able to do, it's, it's kind of confusing and complex, but the, the amount of material we're able to put up on the website is determined by the number of pages the town has overall. And we have a specific number of pages we have to stay under. Now, a page can have a lot of things on it, as many of you know, and a lot of different links and so forth to other things. But the bottom line is, you can go back, you'll be able to go back about two years. And then as far as calendars, for example, there'll be a calendar on this front screen. You'll, you'll click on the calendar on the committee or commission, you'll see everything that's there. So if you wanna post your meet, your meetings for the next year, they're gonna be right on the front screen. So, you know, everything will be there. Every time you post minutes, every time you post agendas, they'll always be there and they'll be very easily accessible and they can go back.
Right, but there's certain, there's certain projects, almost every project we do is, uh, is, uh, passes through a couple of committees.
Correct.
The playground, so, and then there's also the issue of searching by date. So I'm just wondering if a searchable database is part of all this.
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so, okay, so documents will be tagged by their date of the meeting, uh, the committee, et cetera.
They'll be, they'll, yeah.
The project.
I think, I think there's, I, I forget the number, but it's in the teens of ways that every document can be tagged.
Yes, okay. Okay, so I think, I think we gotta listen to these, uh, we gotta find out with these guys and promote this.
Mm-hmm.
And that they're gonna.
Blended.
For us, we're gonna have to figure it out, yeah.
Well, note one nice thing, too, and it does kinda keep you track of what you've been doing in essence, is in researching some of like the surrounding towns, um, CBC committees, they're on their websites, they post like, oh, you know, this year we did this, this and this project, which is kinda nice, because one, it's a reminder of what you, you know, everybody's been up to, not that way. I think we lose track of it. But it kinda also gives examples of what's eligible, what's not, you know, for other folks that might have a project coming up. Because it, I mean, it's, you know, there's a, not that it's hefty, but there's a fair amount of paperwork and then having to come to a meeting, it's like, if, if it's not something, if it's something way out of the realm that it doesn't look like what we're doing, then it kinda, you know, you're gonna save some people some time and aggravation.
Well, that was, I just thought it was a good idea.
Yeah, I don't know if we necessarily need to form a subcommittee.
Not formally.
And like collectively just all do some research and then be ready, you know, when we.
How do you feel about that?
You need to task, though. You gotta have a task. You have to task people.
Yeah.
It's only, yeah, first.
Yeah, that's why I thought of some, instead of just having one, you're right.
You have to have a list of tasks, number one.
Yeah.
And then you have to assign, just, this is plain old industry, uh, commercial, uh,
Right.
Business of meetings and products and all that stuff. Um, so you, so you got a, you got a problem. You don't know much about anything because everything's not organized. So it's an org, it's an organizational problem, right? At the BTN, so you need somebody that is kinda going to, uh, wherever this stuff is piled, take it apart and then collate it into individual, so you'd have like the, um, all the different applications for particular, I mean, all the different types of applications for one entity. And then if it, there's a tribute purchase order in there that the chairman has to sign in order to dispense money, right?
Mm-hmm.
A signed copy of that, a copy of it, not the original.
Mm-hmm.
Or whatever, you know, the original should be, you're actually, so then, then once you've done that, now you, you're sitting in a nice spot because you have everything all there.
Mm-hmm.
And then, then you can go off and, and, you know, put it online or, or whatever, make it however you wanna do all that stuff. But, but you wanna, for us, we need to go back and look at all those things to see how they were done. Did they do it like we did in all in three or four things in one, one night? By the way, um, there was a question by the town attorney about whether that was a legal thing to do. But I haven't heard any more of it.
Apparently it's fine. So it's, it's on the warrants, all of that, all those, you know.
It passed. So actually at the, at the prior meeting, when we kinda had talked about that and Mr. Woods was like, no, but we've never done that. There is, it's within really the control of the committee to make that decision because there is a special, you know, it would, a special consideration based on the timeline of a project. So I don't think, you know, legally by, you know, mass general law, there's anything that says you can't do it.
Yeah, like, like for instance, if somebody comes in with everything filled out, the, uh, the first tab, you know, I forget what it's called, what it said, the, um, feasibility or the, okay, so they may have been on top of it, says, well, we did that and here's the financial one, and here's the,
Right.
Here's what we think the warrant should have.
Yeah, it was tweaked. Everything was tweaked, the money, everything's boom, boom, boom.
Right.
We had those, everything went through. I never got a phone call that it was illegal, so.
Well, so I'm gonna give the members enough time.
Yeah.
To review this stuff. You're not gonna review it during the meeting, so I don't know how that's gonna work.
We were just under.
Well, I think that's another big part of this process is going back to the Mass, the Massachusetts Community Preservation Coalition, reading their bylaws and then using that, you know, because that could have been updated. We can, you know, cross-reference our bylaws if we have them um, versus what the state is currently using.
Right, that's the other thing you want in front of you, too, is a copy of the Dyson bylaw that instantiated the CPC to the end, right? So you got that on the table and you're looking at all the other prior documentation of every single case that is, as I was told.
Did you?
Well, I, I think maybe this has been going on. When did this get established? Two thousand nine, right?
Something like that, yeah.
It's been a while since.
I mean, that's a long ways back, I think, maybe for the sake of digging, make three years?
I agree with Jonathan like this, and it was going back two years, because they don't wanna bury their website and everything in it, so.
And believe me, we're not the only.
I like your idea to go two or three years back.
Two years back, I think, gives a big enough sampling of, of projects.
Yeah.
I'd like to see the whole thing on there.
Well, we can, we.
Well, we do the whole thing, but I'm just worried about the. Because otherwise, it's not a complete reference, you know? Do you have time to, to look through all this stuff? I mean, I, I still work full time, unfortunately. I'm gonna say, I'm gonna back off and.
Well, do you want?
Wait, wait.
Go ahead.
Finish on this side here. Maybe you do need a committee. Actually, you'd probably need the whole committee.
Right.
Because it sounds like a lot of work. I mean, hard work.
No.
Well, 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 like, like the historic commission, for instance, what, Pat Gales will, um, if we need to do some organizing, and in town hall, we've got like in the walls some stuff and.
Yeah.
In file cabinets stuff, and it, it was a mess for a while. So we spent maybe a couple, an hour maybe. And then every week we'd do an hour, or we'd do two hours, we'd meet the whole commission.
Mm-hmm.
And we'd all have a little job to do. We're gonna, we're gonna pull the stuff and look all through this stuff and try to put it in, in some kind of order.
I had to do the same thing with parks and open spaces.
So you found stuff, yeah, from here.
Yeah, I actually found old CBC stuff in parks.
But don't forget, though, because when you're looking in the past, one guy was doing three things.
Yeah.
And then it's like, it's like getting like mail folders and then we just like put things into place so we know where they are.
Yeah.
I say just grab a handful of stuff at a time, start creating those folders physically, and then when we're done, we'll just grab the two years that we wanna move up.
And I've got a thumb drive I'm still going through. And that's interrupting.
Yeah, we'll fill that up pretty quick.
Well, I got a lot of history on that, that's something.
Think this is gonna take so much, uh, file space? Well, I mean, if you start putting a lot of documents, you go about five or six years, you'll fill up that drive, depending what size.
CPC?
Well, you'd say you got this much paperwork, we had to see it, you know?
Karen had a five year, I, well, she did it for five years.
Five years, she did that.
Like, this is what I got from her, five years.
Didn't have fun unless it's got a lot of images on it, you know, big. I don't see that as. I know it's gonna get done.
We're working on, I mean.
Well, there's, I think it was a hundred, a hundred cases, meaning a hundred entities came in here looking for money, right?
Right.
Okay, so you have a hundred in there, hundred.
Saying a quarter by changes of descriptions, what they want.
Whatever. Oh, that's the other thing. Uh, things like, say, the, um, the diagrams that you submitted.
Oh, the plans, yeah.
Plans, were they in some kind of computer format? Or how did you receive them?
I received them in, in an email and I printed them.
Okay.
That way you, you know, you have to finish.
We did it off the action.
To the main printer over here at the town hall to print it out, because those were pretty large.
I went to staples.com.
In the van, right.
Right, well, I wanted, I mean, who wants to look at, you know, this or, you know, for that project anyway, you know?
So, so we could, we could, you know, take a sample of one of those folders, once we get them all straightened out and everything. And then convert one of those, say, typical application, whether to a PDF file. Using, whatever, there's a lot of tools, uh, it's a company that created PDF, it was so long ago.
My computer was doing that.
You could say, uh.
Like Adobe or Acrobat.
Professional version where you can create PDFs.
Oh, okay, Adobe Acrobat, you'd have that.
Um, well, like my, my computer has, um, a bunch of free tools on it that will create PDF files.
Yeah, well, I can do that office, like with me, with my Apple, I can do it with this, I can scan a document and make it whatever.
I do it all the time, right, it used to be that the company that invented the PDF format, uh, used to sell an expensive. Regulations and you had a reader.
Well, how about we do this, what do you think about this, you wanna table it and then we'll, September, pick it back up, because instead of reinventing the wheel like you said.
Yeah, these guys, Jonathan, they gotta solve all those problems at the town level, right, the size, the size of documents, you know, D, you know, shrinking the images down to save the town money, all that kinda thing, balancing the cost of storage, the value of documents.
Mr. Chairman. Just, just to let you know very quickly, and I'm gonna need to log off in a, in a couple of minutes here. But, but the way, the way part of this process would work, for example, is if, if somebody were to go online and fill out with an application of any sort, then the application becomes live. So anybody can see it after that, and then as you require documents, if you require drawings, if you require budgets, if you require schematics, any of that, as those things get sent to you and uploaded, they all become part of that same application. So the public is gonna see, and anyone will have access to anything that's applied for, put in for, in real time, as, assuming it's uploaded, it'll all just become, you know, page one of how many of that application. So it'll always be there and it'll stay there for, for future purposes.
That's great, I think that's the way to go, right?
No, I think, I think you, you guys are on something, I agree with Ollie, I think we should do, it's like table, but like Kevin said, we should read the CPC guidelines during the summer, get an idea what we're into.
Do a little homework.
Yeah, and then bring some of that paperwork in, not all of it, we're probably all. Yeah, and we're looking at it, get an idea what we're, what we're getting into.
Well, that tune, if we end up with a secretary clerk, whatever the position.
That could be.
That could be something that at least they could not say, hey, you know, get, get in the dungeon and.
Whole lot of that. So that we can start learning process, what was done before. I think it's a great idea.
And I mean, I have no problem over the summer tasking myself, like to come back in September, and I'll just present myself to the committee, this is the way we've been doing it, this is the way the state is doing it, this is the way maybe one or two neighboring towns of similar population are doing it. So we can kinda see, you know, are, are we doing it right, and, uh, you know?
It's similar to what you've been doing.
Yeah.
With everything else, just, it should gel into.
Believe it or not, like the coalition website is actually fairly interesting, and some of the, the information that's available as it pertains to what, you know, we should be doing.
Yeah, no, I think it's a great idea we are reading, because sometimes being on different committees when it comes to that, Tim was a, a workhorse with them, he used to know that line by line. Because he loved to research, and I give him a lot of credit for doing that.
Just recently, actually, it was kind of interesting that it happened, but I didn't speak to that gentleman up in Boston, and once he gets back on the road, we're gonna try to have him come down here.
So we mentioned. Yeah, yeah, he was talking about bringing it down to just give us a refresher here.
That's good.
Well, you gotta really think, I mean, it's been established and it's been done a certain way since two thousand and nine, but there has to have been some sort of evolution.
Some changes, yeah, it has to be.
Okay, so you wanna leave it at that, then we'll just.
I say we just bring up on CBC, and then, uh, take it up in September.
Do some homework.
Hopefully by then, maybe we get a clerk, and then we can, uh, help her out a little bit.
Oh, I, that is one thing I think that we need to figure, do we wanna leave that, uh, the application or clerk, the clerk position open until September, but I mean, if that's the first time we're gonna meet, we might as well, I don't know how, how many people are gonna come.
I don't think of that.
I think we should.
How many, do we?
They did accept the.
The vacation kinda thing, is that more in it? In other words, is anybody gonna come with an application during that time?
From my understanding, I think you're totally wrong, but no one really comes up in the summer, it's always been in the fall. And something I have to read too, because I think, didn't we have like a, sort of like a, a due date when we accept applications? And then it goes.
Kinda cuts off.
Right, yeah, so I mean, that's, that's what I was gonna say. And the other thing, people should, we should circulate this document, and everybody should pull this out and scribble on it or mark it up.
Well, that's another thing.
You know, in here, it does say, uh, July and October, it says, begins on one July and ends on one November. So really, the window for a standard approval process ends on the first of November. Now, the idea was, okay, the idea was, application, November first, accept the application in January, um, accept the application for funding in February, then come up with a warrant in March, you know, one, sort of a one month at a time thing.
Which again. I've never seen that document, that's why I had so much confusion submitting my application, because that wasn't available to the public. Um, so I don't, I don't know where you got it, I bought a copy of it to read it.
Dave, can you, uh, I know you're a techy too, can you make an electronic form and email that to us? And like you say, we'll talk, you know, we'll make our remarks on it and come back.
Yeah, because that's, that's another thing to consider, like even the, the, the timeline. I mean, if it's some simple little project, like I, I think, I barely listened, but the town clerk, that was like a, well, a five thousand dollar project.
Yeah.
So wait, six months? Was it, I would, that's right, or something safe, small.
Also says, Kevin, it also says that other timelines may be created in order to bring proposals to a special town meeting or a special opportunity. Which cannot be met using deadlines to find a law, so. Basically, those are the deadlines unless we decide to make up some. I think it'd be good if we, uh, you know, get that to us.
Yeah, it's flexibility, it's flexibility. Okay, so then, we're gonna just more or less table it, but then do some homework.
Yeah, and if, if you pass it out before the summer, we all should read that, and then we'll come back, and we'll set, we'll dig into the paperwork.
Yeah.
Clean it up.
Yeah, I can go in, when we go into public input, I can talk about the, uh, when we go into public input, I can talk about the posting, the, the job for the new clerk.
Okay.
Because I don't have it on the agenda. The other thing on the reorganization of the committee, um, I just didn't think it was fair to leave the planning board out or the housing, so, and we do have a opening for another rat large. So I mean, we can, if you wanna reorganize, and I, my plan was to reorganize in September. In other words, if somebody wants to stay in it and keep going for another year, leave it the way it is, or, because he's doing two jobs and he likes it, but I mean, it doesn't mean he doesn't, he doesn't really love it, but I mean, it doesn't mean. He may wanna stay, he may not.
I mean, I agree that it probably makes the most sense to have, uh, everybody represented.
I think we should wait, I agree.
And we, we really don't have any, you know. Business for the summer, be interested to see who comes on.
Like the plan, did you watch the, there was a plan, not the last planning board meeting, but prior one maybe, is when after Ryan's had left and resigned as chairman and a member. So watching that, I got a good understanding what reorg, because they handled it really well. So what they did is, uh, Woody, who was the, uh, he's the assistant chair, took, opened the meeting, and then he declared all everything known employees, who is what, not who is a member, but.
Yeah, we, we just did this after the electoral election, same thing, and say, yeah, somebody makes a motion to declare all positions vacant, um, you throw all your votes, and then, then you just simply make nominations.
Jeff Cavalo, in this case, became the chairman. And then, so by the way, so watching is a good way to learn, and one of the, some of the best, uh, it's, there's some, most, most seem to me, but sometimes, some, some, uh, committees and, and commissions are not particularly experienced, because no, they don't have any veterans on the board. But in this case, um, because I, even though Ryan's, um, some people may disagree with him over certain things, but I still thought he was a great, one of the best I've seen.
Definitely.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you can't dispute that, but the problem was, there were just a lot of, nothing was, pretty much kinda kept everything to the most of its best, so. You can't.
Water over the bridge.
No, no, that's what I mean, I wasn't gonna bring a whole dam under the bridge, whatever.
Sometimes it's.
But I mean, it depends on what part of the country, that's right. So basically, uh, we'll hold off on that till we come back in fall.
Okay.
And then the other thing was, we'll go into, uh, the next meeting, would be, was it third Thursday? In September? That's where we usually be.
That would be the sixth, uh, fifteenth.
Fifteenth of September? Okay, and what time we wanna meet, what time we have?
Six o'clock?
Yeah, that makes it easier for the other guy to come to, right? That's a digits, so, and I'd like to have him here too.
Yeah.
And six, so that's the fifteenth, okay, then, is there any, uh, as far as public input, let's, anybody out there? Dyson watch? He doesn't, he just watches.
What is Dyson watch?
That's a, I think it's Dan Higgins, they said.
Oh, yeah?
I don't know, anybody else? We never saw Mr. Dyson again, remember?
Noticed that once and then he.
Okay, so in the, in the public input, we can talk about the secretary, the new, uh, putting the thing out, so I'd like to post it. We're gonna post it internally, we'll, him do the interviews, we'll pick the person, we'll bring him in, whatever, they'll fill out all my rest.
What do you mean internally?
Inside the town hall.
Oh, who, I mean.
We don't know, we don't know who's.
You got some secretaries that work part-time, so they like picking up the second.
So just to, yeah.
Not many, but it's.
Even though she was a non-union position, just to be fair, you would post it. She got the same rate as a union person, so, but I don't believe they'll start as a senior clerk to work it later.
How many hours would she get in that job?
Well, that's, uh, debatable.
Wasn't that a flat stipend for the year? It was an hourly? Interesting.
Interesting.
That's very interesting.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's capped.
And that includes, uh, our pay.
I mean, there wasn't that much, um. Yeah, the dues, that's another thing, but I mean, it was an hour, believe me, I didn't know until I got in there what it was and then.
Well, I'm sure because it's probably been posted prior, you know, previously, uh, that.
I understand that.
Specifically, uh, we input, it's probably gonna be the job posting.
If you post it, if you post it internally, as they, they call it internally, I mean, it doesn't mean that the word of mouth, once you post it, gets out, I mean, I don't know who's gonna, we don't know if anybody want, is even interested in that.
Oh, part of that criteria too, where I like to see is, if we get into another. And that person needs to work remotely through Zoom, they gotta have a good connection, we can't just.
I'm not doing that again.
Yeah, I don't wanna hear like, oh, I can't call in, I can't do this, like, while, sorry, but we hire you to, you know, help the committee.
It's our decision, it's our decision to pick the name, it's up to us.
Right.
So we just have to get a name, so I mean, if, once you post it internally, I'm sure that if nobody grabs it internally, then you could go.
All right, so do, do we have to make a motion to do that, to say we're gonna post that job?
Well, I do have another question too, just on this one, it, so say, do we wanna leave the deadline open that long, in that long of a period? And what, or do we wanna shorten it, and then if there is a number of applications, do we wanna call a meeting to order so that we can hit the ground running in September? I mean, just a short interview process meeting?
We gotta do something.
Because we could essentially, it doesn't have to be our regular meeting, we can call a special meeting.
Right.
Outside of our, you know, third Thursday if needed.
Yep.
I'll make a motion that the chair, uh, post the position of clerk, and that with the closing date of August first.
That would be fair, right, I would think.
And that we call a special meeting to order once applications are received.
That sounds good. Second? Anybody?
Can we run a second? Okay, this is prudent, okay.
And that would give us enough time that we'd be pulling, then like, like we do, if we have to meet, maybe we'll see.
Right, and I think if we can, if we do, if we can get some applications, do the interview process.
Does anybody have a problem with that internal posting, Dave?
Yeah, I, I was just gonna suggest, maybe we should just put right onto preference, I don't know. Preference will be given to a candidate to a able-bodied person.
Well, COVID didn't help, did it?
No, I mean.
Well.
Well, I mean, I think that.
I'd like to have the person here.
Hopefully we get, it would be nice to have more than that, and then we can ask that question of them, you know?
Right.
I, I, it's gonna be somebody obviously that's gonna be somewhat a little bit technically savvy, um.
And a good connection.
And good connection.
I mean, internet, it sounds silly, but.
I'd be calling her up and goes, Karen, what are you doing? He goes, oh, I can't get on, I can't do this, and I'm like, I'm saying this up. It's like. It's not her fault, but it's just, it just makes it difficult.
Yeah, we'll do a roll call on that and that'll be it.
Yeah.
Mr. Marvell.
I, I, I'd say aye to that, aye please.
Aye, aye, myself is aye, unanimous, so that, that's a good plan. So you think anything else? I think we can wrap it up.
Well, I think we had a very good meeting tonight, and, uh, Kevin, welcome aboard, and Jonathan already took off.
You were here so much, you're already like a member.
I'm starting to get the hang of it. I like the side of the table a little better.
You got enough to do too.
So, should we move to adjourn here?
Yes.
Yeah, we could make a motion to adjourn, I mean, you'll have to, we can't. So we'll make a motion to adjourn in a second. Well, you made a motion to adjourn in a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, so, let's go. Kevin. So we're gonna wrap it up at seven fifteen P M. Thanks, everybody, do night, Dyson watch. So I think it's going, it's going in the right direction, and you get some fresh.
Yeah, I think, I think, uh.
We're still.